You don't have a federal, you gotta go to the federal courthouse on Spanish. I understand.
No, I don't. I'm saving myself.
To the marshal over there. To the U.S. Marshal. Yeah, and that way they can try to get a little bit.
I have a video.
But we don't do, we don't do federal stuff.
Yeah, during the awards recognition by council. Maybe communications to see who put their hand out. Yeah, award, yeah. City Council.
What's your video, they gonna show it?
Yeah, they gonna show it.
Hey, Commando.
We don't even have a forum.
What's your video, they gonna show it?
Yeah, they gonna show it.
Hey, Commando.
We don't even have a forum. He just gotta come up and grip.
Alright, the meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have our invocation by Mr. Ken Epperson. And Councilman Flurry will lead us in the face.
Peace be unto you. Let us all bow, please. Father in heaven, thank you for another day in the land of the living. Father, we thank you for the great Redeemer, your son, Jesus Christ, for allowing us another opportunity to take part in the tree of everlasting life. Father, we thank you for this meeting today. We thank you for all of our citizens that are here that are interested. We thank you for our leaders and we hope that it will be productive and a meeting that will be held pleasing in your eyesight. Father, we want to ask your thanks for all of our veterans that's located not only here nationally but throughout the world protecting our freedoms. Father, we thank you for our seniors. We ask for your prayers that is sick and bereaved. These and other blessings we ask in your son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place flag, join me in place allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Flurry.
President.
Councilman Epperson. Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilwoman Lynch.
Here.
Councilman Ball.
Here. Is that a motion to approve the minutes of administrative conference?
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Flurry. Approve the minutes, please vote.
Mr. Chairman. Was the motion to approve all three of the minutes?
It was, sir. Eighth, ninth, and special meeting.
Motion carries with five.
Two outs.
Any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests that like to acknowledge at this time? Councilwoman Lynch?
Uh, yes, I have a video in, I guess about a week, the city. The city will play host to the 28th Annual National Black Farmers Association. And so by video, Dr. John Boyd, who's the CEO, founder, and president. I don't know if we have some volume. Can you start it over? Is, uh, sent out a video to their members across the country. Promoting Shreveport as the conference site.
Hi, I'm John Boyd, founder and president of the National Black Farmers Association.
Cut it up.
Coming to you live from my soybean fields in Baskerville, Virginia. Right here from Baskerville, Virginia, and I have an important message for you. We are celebrating our 28th Annual Conference this year in Shreveport, Louisiana, November 2nd and 3rd at the Hilton Hotel 103 Market Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I want you to come out and bring your family, your friends, your children, because you don't want to miss this important information that we're gonna have for you at this year's conference. We're gonna have national speakers. There'll be representatives, representatives there from the United States Department of Agriculture, where you can apply for loans and grants and technical assistance, things that you need on your farming operation. And if you're a landowner, we want you to come out and attend this very, very important conference. Again, November 2nd and 3rd, Shreveport, Louisiana. This message is coming from you live from Boyd Farms. And I'm John Boyd, founder and president of the National Black Farmers Association, a working farmer, a working fourth-generation farmer, right here from Baskerville, Virginia. And we want you to come out and celebrate with us this year in Shreveport, Louisiana, November 2nd and 3rd, Hilton Hotel 103 Market Street. And if you have questions or concerns, you can reach us right now. Again, the number is 804-691-8528. See you there, Shreveport, Louisiana, November 2nd and 3rd.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, so I understand, I spoke with them maybe the end of last week and they've already had several hundred people to already register. So we're really excited about the farmers that'll be coming from across the country to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lynch. Councilman Flurry.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was happy to see that those guests would be coming in on the 2nd and 3rd because on the 3rd, we'll be having an affair that's entitled the Living Legend Gala in honor of Dr. C. O. Simkins. The Northwest Louisiana Civil Rights Coalition is putting this on. Ambassador Andrew Young will be our special guest. Proceeds from this gala will go toward, to help in revivalizing the old Galilee that the city has taken an effort to restore that will be transitioned into a civil rights museum. I think the mayor has acquired some funding already toward that effort.
We have.
So, you know, tickets are still available. You can call, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's online, if you go to the Civil Rights Museum, I mean, the Northwest Coalition website, you can see how to acquire tickets. It's really getting a lot of attention and we think we're gonna have a very well-attended event and hoping that most of our elected officials, especially and citizens as well, will be in attendance. I'd be remiss if I did not say that John Settle purchased the first table and I think he's still looking for some guests to sit at his table.
I'm bidding it off.
You're bidding it off? Okay, well, you may get something, but you can't go over the value of that ticket, okay? Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. And as well, we, in front of us, I don't know if anybody's gonna address this. The mayor is, okay. Okay, alright, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just wanted, um, the BRF had a luncheon today and I just wanted to say again and give congratulations to the chairman of the board, Art Thompson, who's done a well job over there. And I didn't get a chance to say that today when I saw you, but I wanted to make sure I told you today. So thank you for your services over there. Uh, if no one else has anything. And, uh, Mayor Tyler?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman and members of council. I just want to echo the sentiments of both council members. Councilwoman Lynch, of course, we're excited to have the Black Farmers National Association coming into Shreveport. That wasn't, that is not on my sheet, but I did want to acknowledge that. And we're excited, we're gonna be able to go by and welcome them to our great city. And also with the gala for Dr. Simkins. We are excited about that one also and we'll be going there. But both of these events are so significant and so important to our community. At this time, and I do have some announcements, but I want to bring up in just a minute, Mr. Kenneth Epperson. I told him I used to call him my favorite commissioner. But today, we always want, we always want to do what we can to honor our veterans and show our support for all they have sacrificed to protect and defend this country. At this time, I'm gonna call up Mr. Epperson to present a proclamation to him recognizing Veterans Affairs Week, which will take place before we meet again in November. After I present the proclamation, Mr. Epperson will then come up and say a few words. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, if you will join me at the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir. The proclamation reads, "Whereas millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century and have made the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas the Cattle Parish Commission, City of Shreveport, Boja City, and the Boja Parish Police Jury have united together to sponsor a parade and award ceremony for our local veterans and their families at the Louisiana State Fairgrounds on Sunday, November 11th at 2:00 P.M. And whereas all businesses and public entities are asked to post 'Thank You' and welcome veteran signs during the week of November 5th through November 11th, recognizing the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served and who are still active in the armed forces. And whereas public and private school systems, primary, secondary, and higher education institutions are asked to schedule educational programs whereby veterans and military personnel may serve as guest speakers. Special recognition to our veterans at all religious institutions doing religious services is also encouraged. And whereas all citizens of Cattle Parish, Shreveport, Boja City, Boja Parish, and surrounding municipalities are asked to attend the parade in mass numbers at the Louisiana State Fairgrounds Midway and to attend the award ceremony at the Boja Civic Center to honor our veterans for protecting our American freedoms. Now therefore, I, Ali S. Tyler, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, in celebration of the 7th anniversary, do hereby proclaim the week of November 5th through 11th, 2018, as Veterans Appreciation Week in the City of Shreveport, and urge all Americans to give our honored men and women our unfailing gratitude and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. Thank you so much, Mr. Epperson, for all that you do every day.
A few words, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Tyler. President of council, council members, visitors and friends. It's indeed a pleasure to be here today. Veterans, America's first heroes. Every day should be Veterans Day in America. Why do you say that? June of 1775, under the leadership of General George Washington, the Continental Army was formed. Even before the Declaration of Independence, before we declared our independence from Britain, even before the Constitution of the United States of America was written, they threw down their plows, their hoes, their rakes, they left their wives and their families, and they went to defend this nation. And that is heading here today. We must never forget the sacrifices that was made in 1775 that are still going on currently in Iraq, Afghanistan, and places that we don't even know because they are doing things to protect our freedoms in our American way of life. I left a pamphlet with you. I'd like to invite everyone out on Saturday, November 10th, at 5:00 P.M. at the Boja Civic Center. We will honor 11 veterans, three will be posthumously. Eight will still be living for their services and their sacrifices, not only during their military presence, but as well as for the community. And want everyone to come out, it's open to the public, a beautiful ceremony. On Sunday, 2:00 P.M., we'll host our 7th Annual Veterans Parade at the Louisiana State Fairground. This year, we won't be impeded by a number. We had to limit our participants to 100 units last year, but now we're holding the honor ceremony at a separate date on Saturday because it was kind of taxing because some of our veterans are up in age. They couldn't come and stage the, uh, stage for the parade, go down the parade route, then do the honor ceremony. So it'll be a lot more, plus parking was an issue too at the fairgrounds last year. So once again, I'd like to invite everyone to attend. And I just wanted to let you know that veterans aren't always looking for the military for a handout. There's a figure that the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs and the Veterans Affairs out of Washington, D.C. put out, there's a tremendous economic impact with Barstool Air Force Base. For Cattle Parish alone, there are 18,470 veterans and their widers and dependents. A total of 82,000, uh, 82,410,000 dollars comes to the Cattle Parish on behalf of veterans and military. And our neighbors next door, at Boja, 15,003 military veterans, families, and dependents. A total of 74,656,000 dollars comes to this economy. So I would ask that you all would please come out and let's make sure that we show our veterans and our military how much we appreciate them for their sacrifices. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Don't go too fast, Mr. Commissioner Epperson. Now you've come a long way from when you were a commissioner. I remember when you had a flip phone. And now you're, uh, you're able to pull up information and read from it from a smartphone?
Yeah.
But I wanted to tease you about that. I had to, I'm sorry. But thank you so much, I'm, you know, God. Now who's gonna be the grand marshal this year?
Grand marshal will be Major General James Dawkins, the new 8th Air Force Commander from at Barstool Air Force Base.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Let me also, Ms. Chairman, just express my appreciation to Commissioner Epperson. Since he became the exec director of the Northwest Louisiana Veterans Cemetery, that, uh, that ground has really been impressive. You have, you have maintained such a quality site. I've visited a couple of friends who have been laid to rest out there and the staff and all, they're just so wonderful. I thank you and trust that you continue the good work in your quest to recognize and always be mindful of the veterans of this, of this country. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for your commitment and your passion about veterans. Been seeing that for a long time and I know that everyone's appreciative of that, but I want to just say it for myself also to you. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not just a single effort. We have over 140 volunteers that work with us on putting these deals on, as well as I will convey that information to the staff out at the cemetery. We don't take that as a job, we take it as our calling.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, please.
November 11th is my birthday, so I come out there and act like they're saluting and celebrating for me too. So I make sure I do.
I'll let you ride with me.
Assistant Grand Marshal.
There you go. Thank you, good sir.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Okay, we have a few other announcements. Ms. Chairman.
That's my answer.
Next, as a reminder, Sparky Day is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, October 24th, at 10:00 a.m. to noon in the west parking lot next to Independence Stadium. So if you will, please go by there. I'm sure that Chief Wilburton will, and his staff, will love to see you out there tomorrow. We'll have a lot of young people to come by for Sparky Day. So it's always good to have our leaders to also come by and show appreciation. The Red River District is at full capacity and we will celebrate and relaunch the district with a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, October 25th, at 450 Clyde Fant Parkway under the Texas Street Bridge. Later that same day, the district will host a relaunch party from 5:00 to 8:00 P.M. with the help of the Downtown Development Authority. Each business will have fun-to-one-night-only specials Thursday. And Tipsy the Band, recent winner of the 2018 Louisiana Music Prize, will be performing. The event is free and open to all ages. Next, we're proud to welcome back all the vendors and participants to the 2018 State Fair of Louisiana in Shreveport. The fair will be here from October 25th through November 11th, 2018, closed, of course, Mondays and Tuesdays. Listed among the entertainment for the first time will be the Navy Pride Band. This group will kick off its Celebration of Navy Week at our state fair at 5:00 P.M. Sunday, October 28th. We're honored to have been chosen as one of 14 cities to be visited by the United States Navy and we look forward to eagerly welcoming Commander Rob Lightfoot, which is Commander Robert, but his nickname, Mr. Rob Lightfoot, a graduate of Captain Shreve High School. Some of you may know him. I'm happy to announce that American Airlines will upgrade its Shreveport, Charlotte flight to a larger aircraft in 2019, offering 1,000 additional seats starting in January. I want to thank Mr. Henry Thompson, our Director of Airports, and his staff for securing this for our city. This is a step in the right direction toward improving air connections, which are critical to providing services for our military, corporate businesses, and citizens in North Louisiana. Last week, we had the pleasure of joining Governor Edwards and again today, and DOTD Secretary, Dr. Sean Wilson, for the ribbon-cutting and official opening of the I-49 interchange project at I-220 in North Shreveport. It is nice to have that highway open. I use it, I will be using it a lot when I go to my little church out in Blanchard. Also last week, we held the groundbreaking ceremony for Common Park. If you get a chance to pass by there on Texas Street, you'll see that they've already begun work. We expect it to be complete by spring or summer of next year. Council members, I want to invite you to mark your calendars for this year's upcoming Mayor's Prayer Breakfast to be held at 7:00 a.m. on November 8th at the Shreveport Convention Center. I also want to remind everyone about the Heroes Run that will take place this Saturday in downtown Shreveport. The event is sponsored by Brooks Shears and will kick off near the convention center at 7:00 a.m. At this time, I'd like to have Mrs. Sharrika Jones to come forward and do a brief overview of the 2019 budget. Ms. Jones?
Alright, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This presentation is an overview of the City of Shreveport's 2019 executive budget. And at this time, I will be providing a broad summarized view of the city's budget and I will highlight the major changes within each department and within each city fund. And the clicker's not working.
We don't have to. Get the enter button.
We have a written copy. We have a written copy.
We can provide one. We can, we'll provide one after the presentation.
Okay, this is the schedule for the 2019 budget process. We have two days, which would be Friday, November 16th, and Saturday, November 17th, which was approved by council to hold a detailed department review sessions. We will start with the smaller departments on that Friday afternoon and we will work through the remaining departments on the following Saturday. These review sessions will provide time and opportunity to discuss each department within detail and in depth with each department director and their staff. And each department will present their respective budgets and answer questions during those review sessions. So the budget ordinances were introduced at the last council meeting. And on November 13th, we will have a public hearing that will be advertised and held during the council meeting. Then we have two days of detailed department review sessions. And then finally, according to charter, we have the budget adoption scheduled for Tuesday, December 11th. The budget was prepared with Mayor Tyler's objectives in mind and these priorities are, one, maintaining funding consisting with a strategic plan. And number two, continuing to provide quality services with a sense of urgency at an even higher level of performance and efficiency. Each of these goals are highlighted throughout this overview. So starting with the general fund, this is the chart that is extracted from the budget book and it shows the projected flow of revenue and expenditures to the general fund for the 2019 budget year. 2019 estimated expenditures are 218.9 million dollars and estimated reserves are estimated at approximately 3.3 million dollars. This chart highlights the allocation of each department within the general fund. Public safety comprises a little bit over half. We have 8% towards SPAR, 15% for public works. The 11% of other general fund departments includes the executive office, the legal office, property standards, H.R., I.T., finance, engineering, council office, courts, and marshal. And then the 15% for general government is for the general government department, which houses functions that are not specific to a particular department. This includes OPEB to retirees and civic and public agency appropriations. So I'll go through each department now, starting with the executive office. There is a change, an increase of $26,000 and this is due to a new employee that is on ERS. It also now reflects the 5% employee pay increase that was implemented in 2018 that we initially had a placeholder in general government. The legal department's budget is unchanged. Property standards budget is unchanged. Human resources department budget is a slight increase of 74,000. This does a couple of things to reinstate an office specialist to cover some critical tasks for the H.R. department. It also will allow the city to begin to do national criminal background checks and also to increase funding for the employee assistance program. Information Technologies budget increases by 164,000 and this is primarily to start to phase in and voice over IP phone system. And this will provide the city with an estimated savings of about 90,000 dollars per year, starting at 2020, after the complete system is implemented. SPAR's budget increases by 494,000 and this is due to the equipment package notes beginning in 2018. So now it's reflected here of 224,000 dollars. Increases in utilities and maintenance costs and then also to implement the new digital radio system that's being required for next year. The finance department budget is unchanged. The general government section is an accounting part of the general fund, which houses various receipts and payments not specific to a particular department. And we have health insurance for our retirees here that are increased by 183,000. Again, we have $0 transferred from the street special revenue fund. There's a transfer from the riverfront fund reflected here that is a decrease of 1.4 million dollars compared to last year. Our transfers to golf, sports, trans, MPC, risk, and community development is unchanged. And this will also include our funding for civic and public appropriate, civic and public agency appropriations are housed in this section of the general fund. And then operating reserves are reflected here also, the 3.3 million. The police department's budget increases by 1.6 million dollars and due to a few factors listed here, the 2% longevity increase, the police department's retirement system increase of 883,000, the health insurance increase is 540,000. The police department will begin their payment on their certificate of indebtedness that was picked up for 2018. That's 215,000. And then all other funding for personnel, materials, equipment, and clothing is continued from 2018 within the department. The fire department's budget is increased by 2.1 million dollars. Actually, their budget itself decreased, but because of the additional $3 million in matching funds for our increased EMS revenue receipts, we have to show that within the budget as well. And the net revenue for EMS for 2019 is 12 million dollars. The longevity increase for the fire department is 639,000. Their retirement system rate did not change, so that reflects a decrease of 150,000. Their retirement system rate did not change, so that reflects a decrease of $153,000. There's a health insurance increase, and then we also are reflecting the payments for their Certificate of Indebtedness that was picked up in 2018, and then all other funding for personnel, materials, and equipment and clothing for the Fire Department is maintained. Engineering and Environmental's budget is mostly unchanged. Public Works Department, there's a decrease shown here for $2.5 million, and that is because the landfill is not receiving sludge from Pratt Industries, and the city no longer has a contractual agreement requiring such. Furthermore, we found that the City of Bossier's transfer station has gained a greater share of roll-off container business. The $750,000 that, for asphalt overlay that has typically been budgeted here in Public Works is still reflected within the Street Special Revenue Fund. And again, there's no additional dollars being transferred from Streets. The City Council's budget is a slight increase of $8,500, and this is primarily to anticipate cost of incoming council. The City Court's budget is unchanged. The City Marshal's budget is increased by $300,000. However, the Marshal's, the Marshal's Office will be providing the city an amount of $300,000 in cash to cover that increase. The Internal Service Revenue Fund is the retained risk fund, and this serves as the city's self-insurance fund against activities of the city which include property damage, workers' compensation, general liability claims, and auto liability. The Risk Fund budget has fluctuated from year to year. It varies mostly depending on the level of liability reserves that the auditor is desiring for the city to have. Current year claims, again, will be covered by current year revenue. The 2019 revenue projected is $10.1 million. The 2019 expenditures is projected at $10.1 million, which is relatively the same as 2019. However, the budget number, again, we're required to show that it assumes that the city will pay all past and future claims today. But again, all of the current claims are covered by current year revenue each year. The general fund contribution of $6.9 million is the same as it was for 2018. Under Special Revenue Funds, first, under the Riverfront Development Fund, the change of $1.4 million reflects the decreased transfer to the general fund from $7 million to $5.5 million. The downward trend of gaming revenue has continued, and we are estimating 2019 gaming revenue at $8.5 million. Land rent is unchanged at $1 million. The Neighborhood Investment Program and the Council Appropriations of $150,000 for civic appropriations is unchanged. The Street Special Revenue Fund budget shows a decrease primarily due to the $7.4 million transferred in capital projects that is still being expensed for 2018 roadway program. Revenue has remained stable at approximately $6.8 million per year, and for 2019, again, the Street Special Revenue Fund will not transfer money to the general fund. And the Street Special Revenue Fund budget also will include the $750,000 for asphalt overlay, and the full $6.9 million of the budget can be used for roadway improvements in 2019. The Community Development Fund budget includes funding for Choice Neighborhood Grant Support in 2019. There is Ordinance 86 on the agenda that will add $1.2 million for contractors and grant implementation. As the grant is received, further funds will be included in the budget at that time. The general fund match is unchanged at $890,000. The transfer from Riverfront for, for summer jobs is unchanged at $100,000, and the budget also includes an additional $50,000 from workforce development for additional youth employment. The Grand Special Revenue Fund budget increases primarily due to law enforcement, additional grants that have been received in 2018. This fund also includes grants for the Fire Department of $40,500, Environmental Services of $1 million, and the total police grants is $3.2 million. The grants that we receive for Sports Trans and Airport are going to be shown in their respective capital projects. The MPC's budget is mostly unchanged, and the subsidy from the general fund of $887,800 is continued from 2018. The Redevelopment Agency budget, again, this fund is inactive, and the fund balance of $4,000 is continuing to roll forward. The Downtown Entertainment budget has a decrease of $209,000, and sales tax projections for 2019 is $70,000. Land rent projection is $15,000. The decrease is primarily due to fund balance and reserves. For 2019, in order to better align expenses with revenue collections, the tasks of event management and facilitation will be moved to professional services, which will save the city $22,700 annually. Under the Enterprise Funds, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget increases by $23 million, and this change is primarily due to the increase in operating reserves to fund future revenue debt. There's a 7% increase in sewer charges to fund the consent decree that amounts to $3.7 million. There's a $2.6 million increase that is budgeted to fund debt service for revenue bonds. And again, the operating reserves is going to be used to fund the future revenue, revenue bonds anticipated going into the future for consent decree. The Airport's budget has a slight decrease. This net decrease is due to changes in operating reserves. The reserve also includes the funds that are required by the airport's airline and tenant leases. The airport also received a significant number of new grants from the state and FAA, and those are reflected in the capital budget. Sports Trans budget is slightly increased by $286,000. We also have in this fund a local match of $506,000 for capital projects. And also the subsidy from the general fund is the same as 2018, the $6.5 million. The Golf Enterprise Fund budget is increased by $216,000. The general fund subsidy of $87,000 is unchanged, and then it also reflects increases for ERS, healthcare, new management software, equipment, chemicals, and maintenance. The Downtown Parking budget is increased by $81,000, and this is strictly due to the reserves estimate has increased to now $919,000. The assumptions is that meter receipts will be an estimate of $215,000. Parking tickets, parking tickets, $250,000, and then the, the city will continue to maintain the parking, the parking services contract, which totals $418,000 a year, and this is through the Downtown Development Authority. The Convention Center budget is, has a slight decrease of $10,000, so our transfer from the Riverfront Fund will be $1.7 million. The Hotel Enterprise Fund budget has a change of $1.2 million. The Hotel Enterprise Fund accounts for the city's cumulative contribution to the hotel debt service, and the budget increase is primarily due to the conversion of the hotel debt from a variable rate to a fixed rate. Accounted for separately is the Hilton Hotel operations. The Hilton is projecting that it will bring in $11.1 million in revenue and have $10 million in expenditures, and per their contract, they will hold back $552,000 to set back for future capital replacements. They will contribute $846,000 to debt service in 2018, and projected to contribute about $598,000 in 2019. And under the Debt Service Fund, the budget is slightly decreased by $1.7 million. The millage rate of 16 mills is unchanged for 2019, and the reserves balance is projected to be at $50 million. This chart that's listed here below is showing that the city has paid off a significant amount of debts, general obligation debt principal since 2015. The Tyler administration assumed GOB debt of $207 million at the beginning of 2015, and since that time, the city has paid down more than $71 million of GOB principal. The remaining balance of $135 million at the end of 2019 marks one of the lowest GOB debt totals in city's history. And with this, property taxes have been lowered by more than six mills since Mayor Tyler took office, which has been the lowest millage rate in more than 30 years. No GOB debt has been added since her tenure. An additional $7.2 million shown here will be paid down in 2019, leaving a balance of $128 million principal at the end of next year. So looking back in the year 2000, the city owed $369 million in GOB principal, and property millage collected to pay those notes were 30.54 mills. At the end of 2018, the city will have a GOB principal, principal balance of $135 million, and this will be 16 mills toward that debt, which is a difference of 14.54 mills. So in total, from a homeowner, from a homeowner's perspective, that's $145.40 less per $100,000 of residential, residential property value, and then for a business owner, that is $218.10 less per $100,000 of commercial value compared to 18 years ago. Under the Capital Improvements Fund, if you see this chart, it shows that the majority of it is allocated to consent decree. We have 68% that comprises of water and sewer projects, 9% for street and drainage, 7% for airports, and 16% is attributable to the remaining programs. This shows the changes between the capital projects for 2018 and what is, what will be up for approval for the 2019 budget. Under Recreation, this change is due to the Choice Neighborhood Park Capital, Capital Outlay, and under Streets, it is for a new project to restore roads impacted by water and sewers field operations. Under Airports, it comprises additional FAA and state grants for airport projects, and then under Transit, it includes additional FTA grants for transit projects for Sports Trans. And that includes this overview. Any questions?
Councilwoman Mitch?
Yeah, if somebody else had shorter comments, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
I think so.
Yes.
Very short. Please, could you please send that PowerPoint in an email?
It'll be online by tomorrow morning.
Perfect, thank you. I get too old, I can't see.
In the, in the budget section.
That's it? Councilwoman.
Well, I know you're not gonna be shorter, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Florrie.
Will the administration be able to provide in the budget process the retained risk payout in detail?
Yes, sir.
Come on. I know it was just an overview, but I guess I'm, I'm trying to, to see if I heard something different, or if we're basically saying that our budget priorities are basically gonna be more of the same, which, to me, would just be maintaining the status quo. I tried to kind of write down as, as we went. I'd like to get a little bit more breakdown on the Hilton Hotel, 'cause it, it was a little convoluted for me to keep up with. I wanted to ask about the roof on the Convention Center, if that's reflected in this budget. I also want to know about the refunds on water bills that have gone out, that are anticipated to go out, if there's going to be somewhere in here where the issue of rising water bills that I'm getting, either my constituents are saying is related to the consent decree work, if... Let me just leave it at that for that. I do have a question about, I guess this is something about, the council will have to consider in terms of the youth employment program. I'm definitely interested in that being phased into a year-round on some level. I also wanted to ask about the police budget. It did not appear that that included new police officers. I wasn't real clear, because I didn't see an increase.
It provides for full staffing of police.
What does that mean?
So any open positions that they have, or any that will leave through attrition, they are adequately funded to.
In that amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Even though the, the budget was basically unchanged, except when she gave the break, when she gave the breakdown, it was, the addition was for health, longevity?
Correct. The, the Police Department is, has always been, by the Tyler administration, been directed to fulfill any open positions that they have.
So it's been in there every year, so it's, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
We'll hire as many as we can get, and we have.
Well, I'm not, I don't know if we, well, we'll talk about that in budget session.
I do, and we have.
I gotta try to read my writing here. Public Works, I think you said there was no increase in that budget?
Public Works has.
There's a decrease.
There's a decrease.
That's, oh yeah, I do have an arrow going down here. So that, that concerns me a little bit, because a lot of my issues in my district are related directly to the Public Works Department, so.
Let me, let me assure you, the decrease is strictly, strictly related to the decrease in landfill fees. We, we take in landfill fees and we pay republic out 74% of what we take in, so that decrease is just due to a decrease in, on the revenue side of what they've been able to take in.
Okay, so where is the increase to handle issues that have not been, you know, sufficiently handled in terms of public right-of-ways, you know, bulk pickups, cleaning of the ditches, all of those things that have continued to be a challenge for my district in particular? I'm just speaking of my mind.
Sure.
Without any increase in operating monies?
Exactly.
Or staff?
Exactly.
Because that's all I, all I hear is that we don't have enough people, we don't have enough people, we can't keep people, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and I, and I think that budget reflects what the city is able to do with the funds that we have available, and so I, I think, I disagree with you. I think the city's done a phenomenal job with the. I think the city's done a phenomenal job with the resources and finances that we have available to keep up with the right of ways, to keep, keep them cut, to keep the ditches cleaned. And, and there are times that things fall through the, the cracks, but with the budget that we have, I think, I think this administration and Public Works has done a phenomenal job.
Ryan, you, you almost made me say something.
Well, go ahead and say it.
No, I, no, I don't know, I don't think I should say that over this mic, but suffice it, suffice it to say, a phenomenal job with what the monies that we have, when you know that the monies that we have are not sufficient, and we're not talking, I'm not talking about no falling through the cracks, okay? That's gonna happen, I understand that. I'm talking about the delivery of basic city services.
And they have been delivered?
No, they have not.
Yes, they have.
Throughout this city.
Yes, they have.
Well, I would say if you would come off the second floor...
Do it all the time.
And, well, no, I don't think you've been through District F lately.
I've been there longer than you have.
Okay, well, I think you have not been in District F lately.
On a regular basis.
Because if you have, you would not be saying that a phenomenal job has been done, okay?
I would disagree with you.
So the point that I'm making is, well, we'll, the voters will decide here soon, but the point that I'm making is that there's no increase in the operational expenses for Public Works.
That's because there's no increase in the overall budget, councilperson. As you realize, there's only a certain number of revenue.
I understand.
If the revenue increases, then we can increase those areas in the budget that the, that the executive branch provides to the council. The council can make those amendments. But until the revenue increases, you can't increase expenditures until you can increase revenue.
So we're basically telling people tough, you know what?
Absolutely not. We're providing the same high level of services that we've been providing.
You're saying tough shit, basically.
What you're asking, what you're asking me to do...
That's what you're saying.
What you're asking, and I'm not cussing at you, and I think that's inappropriate.
You told me, you told me to say what I was thinking and I didn't.
You can say what you're thinking.
Okay, so don't, no.
It still doesn't make it professional, it still doesn't make it right. Let me finish. You can't spend more money than you're taking in. What you're asking the administration to do is to budget more expenses than we have in revenue. We can, you know we can't do that. So when we see more revenue, we dedicate it to those areas that we feel need the most.
So in the meantime?
And that's why you, and that's why you see police getting that increase.
In the meantime?
In the meantime, we do the outstanding job we do with the resources that we have available, just like every other city.
Okay, y'all pay attention. Pay attention. I had another question about the status of the audit on the water and sewer. What's the status in there? I know there was some projected time that we were gonna get the results.
Yes, yes, and the audit has not been completed yet.
Okay.
And as soon as it is, I will certainly be giving you all notice. We have a lot that we're asking the outside, external auditors to do. And they are working diligently, trying to complete all of the duties and all of the areas that we've asked them to do. And I'm not sure exactly. I will get an update and I can send that to the entire council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll be, I didn't have any questions for you, but thank you.
And if I may, we will, we can, we will give more details during our, our budget sessions that you all scheduled.
Well, the devil, the devil is into details, Mayor, and, and while I realize this is just an overview...
Yes.
What the, the response that I'm, I'm hearing from the CAO is what I consider a big part of the problem, that we are covering up for people, we're providing cover for people, the good old boy network, that our citizens are continuing to be impacted on a daily basis. I see it every day. I've been seeing a whole lot more in canvassing than, you know, when you're driving by, it's one thing, when you're walking, it looks like you see a whole lot more from the ground level. And there is no way with what I am hearing from my constituents and what I am seeing and what I have been reporting consistently for the past four years, that you can say unequivocally that something different does not need to happen in terms of our delivery of basic city services in the inner city communities. I'm not saying that, that our workers are not doing their jobs, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that they're not doing a good job, that they're not working to the best of their ability. I see them out there, I talk with them. Certainly, I'm not satisfied with some things that I've seen or some things that they've done, and I brought that to you all's attention. And to your credit, Mayor, I don't wanna say what percentage, but I would say greater than ninety percent of the time, you know, it's addressed, okay? But I'm just telling you that, I mean, I heard it today, I mean, I've been hearing it every day, and I've been seeing it. It's not happening in the inner city communities. The same level of service is not being provided consistently across this city. And I have been told, we've been told numerous times, we do not, if you do not have enough staff people, there's no way it can be being done sufficiently if you don't have a full staff. So yes, you can say, we're doing the best we can with what we have, but if what you have is not enough to make sure that everyone receives the same level of basic city services, there's, that's a problem. And so...
So do you, do you want me to address some of this and I can, and then I can be through with what I need to say?
Yes.
As the mayor of the city?
Well, well, I am...
Because, you know, you keep referencing, you know, same level and, you know, I'm going to respectfully disagree with that. But, but let me, let me say this, Councilwoman Lynch, 'cause I anticipated that this discussion would come today. Coming into office three years and eight months ago, we, we faced a lot of challenges. We've done and spent more money in your district probably than any other because of the consent decree work. Millions of dollars, hundreds of millions. And so do we want and desire to do better? Absolutely. We have a lot of vacancies because I think I explained this to you more than one time. It is very difficult to keep good people working at that level. But it doesn't mean that we're gonna give up. We've done and made a lot of improvements in your district, in other districts throughout this city. I hear from people every day that thank us. And I'm not going to say to our employees that you're not working hard and that you're not doing a good job, because I, I truly believe that they are. We have to do better, we will do better, and we will put in place a plan to see how we can hire good people, keep good people, provide a better level. But that's what I commit to do, and we work hard every day in every district. And, you know, and that's, I, I needed to say that because I can tell you, we have put in more streets in your district and in other districts that need the streets. We get complaints from one side of town, well, you, you're doing more with it than you are over here. I hear that, too. But we try to make sure that we are targeting those areas that need the services. Some areas have a lot more needs than others. And what Ms. Crawford has said is, with the dollars that we have, we're giving it all that we can, but we're going to find a way to do even better. But we're gonna commit to do that because we care about every citizen in every district.
So my, my question was, I guess fundamentally, Mayor, is, does the Public Works budget reflect full staffing or is it just based on what we have currently?
It, it, it reflects full staffing, we just are not fully staffed because we cannot keep good people. And we're going to continue with our job fairs, we're gonna continue with workforce development. I met with a company today that's gonna come in, have already come in, and they're gonna work with us on workforce development. So we're gonna be able to fill a lot of these positions. But I, you, you know, it's really, I think, really unreasonable to expect me to fix something in three and a half years that's not been fixed in a long time. But we're getting there because we're fixing things, we're not doing the same level of service. We're fixing things that have never been fixed for the past twenty-five or thirty years. And we're gonna continue providing those services, but we're gonna do better. But we have to continue to grow this city. And that budget reflects full staffing, we just are not fully staffed, and I think you and I have had that discussion privately and publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Bradford. I did have Flory who wanted, did, did wanna speak after Councilwoman Lynch, but I think you asked to go.
I'll hear him, Chairman.
Do we need to keep Ms. Jones standing or can she have a seat?
Wait a minute, I'm not through. Can we dial this back to what we originally started here for the budget process? And I'm almost scared to ask anything. In two thousand and sixteen, the police and public safety budget was at fifty-two percent of total budget. Then it went to fifty-four percent in seventeen, and is, is it not, just your presentation, it looks like it's at fifty-one percent. I'm just curious, just, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm just curious as to...
I know the, the retired is much...
It's a question that, is, is that correct, fifty-one percent? So we went from fifty-four to fifty, fifty-two to fifty-four to fifty-one? That's the way I remember it.
Right, we're at fifty-one percent...
Okay.
Is the total for public safety.
Okay, and then my other deal is in the streets and drainage, um, oh, I'll, I'll just save that for the budget process. Thank you.
Councilman Corbin. Would you like for her to stand or sit?
No, she's rekindling.
Come on up.
My comment's very brief.
And we can answer from over here.
You know, I don't know who's looked at the budget online, looked at their budget book or, or where we are in that process individually. It's election year, we're all aware of that. Some of us are running for reelection, some of us aren't. When it comes down to it, if the council as a whole or small groups feels that there's something in the budget that they don't like or would like to change, we have that prerogative. Today, the mayor's handing off the budget to the council. And from now to the first meeting in December, if any council member has a change they'd like to make, if they'd like to propose more equipment for Public Works or less of this or more of this, that's, that's our job now, is to come up with budget amendments and changes and get four votes for them. And, you know, I, I would like us to put some energy toward that. If there are things we don't like in the budget, then let's talk about them and let's see if there's any consensus among the council to make those changes because it's, it's in our hands now. That's the way the process works, and that's what we're supposed to be doing these next few weeks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Just, Councilman Flory, just to, just to answer your question, the, the percentages that you were using a while ago, that's the total percentage of the entire budget for public safety. I wanted to be clear to say, the police department's budget has gone up every year since Mayor has been in office. They spent fifty-five point six million dollars in seventeen, they were budgeted fifty-eight point three million dollars last year, their budget is fifty-nine point, almost sixty million dollars this year. So they've seen a significant increase every year.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I'm gonna use my old cliche, and I, and Councilman Corbin is giving me the reference, and I'm, I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments until we go into session so we can hash out what we feel is, is our perspective. But my, my cliche is simply, we don't see things as they are, we see things as we are. I agree with Councilwoman Lynch in a way that I was hoping that the budget would reflect sort of, sort of closer to what I see. But yet, the administration see it the way they presented it, and we'll have to deal with that. And I'm basing my, 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 my comments on the fact that, and, and a lot of us within the Public Works Department, but some other departments as well. And I appreciate the presentation, Ms. Fields, Jones, Mayor, I appreciate the presentation, but I, but I must say, if we, if we was to go back and look at, and I, and I use a paper trail when I, when I make requests for service or project concerns, I said before that the only person I had any hand in hiring in this city was the clerk of the council. And I used the clerk of the council to inquire, 'cause I have no authority over any city worker to, to get things done. And I have a paper trail on things that I passed through the clerk for services rendered requests or for projects inquiries. And, and I can go back and I can research, and I did this morning when I was right there in MLK with some projects that specifically dealt with Public Works that I requested over months ago, months ago, and they have not been addressed. Ditches need cleaning out and drainages, and no action has been taken on those, which, which again, would, would lead me to believe, like Councilwoman Lynch, is that we either, we don't schedule things on, on a priority basis or we use our resources for other things, but there's some areas of my district that should have been addressed, some areas that I requested long ago. But again, if that's, that's a concern, then I will bring that up at the proper place. But I'm gonna say again that we see things, not as they are, but as we are. It doesn't matter whether this is electiony or not. We are responsible to present a budget that will address the needs of this city. And I think we need to do that. And I'm gonna do whether or not the other councilmen feel that way. And I understand that, and we can only do what we do with the finances that we have. But I still believe that we can make modifications to things to address the basic needs of the city. Because they don't, and I, and I said this yesterday, I don't know how we got the horse, court before the horse, but a lot of the, a lot of the neglect or the non-services provided is reflection, our constituents feel falls on the council member of that district. You didn't do this, you didn't do that, this didn't happen. And if it's, if it's a, if it's a issue of not having enough staffing, I think we need to, we need to be, we need to be, we need to be know that. I think we need to get some feedback and follow up on, this has not been done because we did not have whatever we needed to make it happen. We, we don't get, I don't get, I don't know about the other council, I get... We, we don't get, I don't get, I don't know about the other council, I get very little feedback for requests of services that I, that I request. So I look forward to the 16th and the 17th of, of November. And council members, I'm gonna trust that we will be prudent in adjusting, modifying, and presenting to this city a budget that is in the best interest of the city, but it also reflects our ability, our ability to govern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, just one sentence, I, I do plan to go back and take a look at requests that you've made, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you.
And see if we've addressed those. Oftentimes, we do. You've not sent one that I know about that was not addressed. Now, I know that sometimes it does take, you know, longer than some people want. But we get requests, hundreds of them every week from every district, and we try to get to those on a priority need, particularly if they are emergencies. But I'm gonna go back and have my staff to pull your requests, because oftentimes, when we address those, the citizens never come back and tell you that they've been addressed. Now, they'll tell you when they, when there is a problem. But when we go out and take care of the problem, you may not hear back from the citizen. Okay? So, you know, I would wish that they would, but they don't. And we don't report to the council. What we do is try to take care of the citizen. But I will go back and do a paper trail, because we do a paper trail too. And as much as I can, we try to keep up with those, so does Mr. Crawford. But, you know, if I had to take a look at your request along with everybody else who make those requests, I would say that we try to address most of those. We pull people from one place to another all the time if there are emergencies. But I, we, we too keep a paper trail. And we'll try to see what's been addressed and what has not been addressed so that the facts can reflect, you know, what has taken place. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
This, this was just a, this was just an overview, right? Am I saying it correctly?
It's an introduction.
Yeah, of, of...
Supposed to be.
Of the budget, right?
Supposed to be.
So 16 and 17 is the time that we can hash that out upstairs, I believe now. I'm not saying...
Absolutely.
Nothing negative to one way or the other, because I guess everyone has their own difference of opinion on how this goes. So with that being said, I know the biggest deal that I've heard so far is the hiring or not having enough staff. And, and, I mean, is it more so of a, like a background issue or something like that? That's the...
It's a pay issue as well.
And pay.
We're competing with a private sector where the unemployment rate in February was the lowest in Shreveport and Bossier than it has been in 10 years. And so as those other jobs gear up in the private sector, as the, you see the IT jobs come on board, we lose IT specialists all the time. It's hard to stay competitive. And so we try to do that as much as possible, as much as the budget will allow. We try to make those salaries as competitive as possible.
And another thing, Councilman, Mr. Chairman, is oftentimes, we get people to come in. Since we did, you all approved the budget that we did in 2016, starting with those entry-level people who don't have, you know, a specialized educational, you know, degree. When we started that, we were able to get some people, honestly. But then, when they were not performing, oftentimes, drug problems became an issue. And so, you know, when you have people operating machinery, you know, we, we do send them to EAP to try to get them help, but if they're continuously doing it, then they in danger. And so a lot of it has to do with us not being able to retain. And when they can go, and our small business entrepreneurship really has picked up significantly because a lot of them now have started their own small businesses. So we lose employees that way. But there are dynamics out there that create that. And we're gonna be looking very carefully at trying to fill in that gap and see what we need to do to keep people and retain them.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Chair Crawford. Is it Councilwoman Lynch?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to dare insult the public's intelligence. This is a meeting of the, of the City Council, regardless of who presents what, if it's an overview, if it's a summary, or if it's whatever you wanna call it. If you make that information available to the public, and this, you know, the meeting that we have to go over the details of the budget, I think the only public member that consistently comes is Ken Craft. And there's hardly ever any of the general public. I don't know if those budget meetings are recorded and provided, you know, or available to the general public. But in terms of attendance, so although this was an over, quote unquote, overview today, it is the public's first information on what is being presented for the 2019 budget. And I think it's appropriate at any time, as representatives, when information is presented, if there are questions or concerns about that information, that is most appropriate, that it's, you know, if that member so chooses to address it at the time it's presented, I think is appropriate. So, you know, I'm not phased because it's an overview and, you know, you, you give a 30, 30-page-plus report, and, you know, I'm just, you know, just gonna look at it and say, okay, we'll talk about it in two weeks. And so I think that, at least for, for me, was a time to, to ask questions about it. Thank you.
And you had it right. You had it right to question, that any, any time that you so feel. I just didn't, it seemed to me as if it was getting to borderline attacking match, and that's what I was hoping not to see. That was my, that was the direction I was headed in on.
Oh, no, no, there was, there was no, no, there's no attack.
All right, if no other council member has anything, then. Any council member have any concerns, anything to property standards? Don't think so. I had a question that I can ask you after the fact.
I got a question too, but I'll ask you after.
That means we need you to stay, Mr. Green, for a while. Mr. Clark, did you have a master plan, a report or anything?
I just never know, Mr. Chairman, when you're gonna ask me, Mr. Emerson's gonna report on the master plan. But we had a master plan committee meeting this past month. And in that meeting, we sort of rekindled the master plan committee because it had been dying and from just inactivity and so forth. And one of the primary things that they're doing now was the recommendations for the historic preservation ordinance and the commission and those type of discussions. Plus, we're, we're looking forward to expanding our opportunities in strategic and long-range planning. It's sort of fallen back on the bike burner somewhat because of obvious reasons. But we have some, we have some pretty interesting ideas that we're gonna be running through the master plan committee and, and bringing back before you in very near future. Have any questions, sir?
Hey. Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
I've been reluctant and kind of tardy saying this, but I want you to know personally in front of all these people that every morning, I get down on my knees and face that window to the east thanking God that you're in charge of the MPC. This is one year that I won't be cutting the budget on MPC. I'll be trying to get it back like it ought to. You are a breath of fresh air. Thank God we're free at last. And I just want you to keep up the good work. You are the man. You're making things happen up there like it should have been. And I want you to know, I appreciate it, and the citizens appreciate it. I'm getting comments from people from all over the state saying that we finally made it right. And so I want you to know, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
We'll put you over Public Works Department then.
Councilman Corbin.
And I think everybody's received their budget actual financial report via email. If you have any questions about it, please let me know.
By the way, do we know who's taking over that just, you know, extremely important role that you provide on a monthly basis to this council?
The next chairman of the Audit and Finance Committee.
We need to make sure that's highlighted as one of the responsibilities of that post and make sure...
That's right. It's $5 extra a month.
Got that, okay.
All right. We have no public chair today. Mr. Thompson says that any legislation will be added.
None.
Okay, we have the following request to speak.
Sammy Mears, on 79, I believe. You're gonna have to start working on your penmanship because I struggle with some of your, your letters here. For the next council, that is.
Save it.
Time out.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. I believe this is really a wonderful idea, contacting Union Pacific and other parties who are interested as well as myself. Have the engineer and the director of Public Works please start taking process of reopening the vehicular access to Lake from Commerce Street to Sciport Discovery Center as soon as possible. I love the idea very much. Also, to reopening vehicular access to the crossover of the Lake Street railroads, great crossing as well, I believe that's a good idea, and just as well. I would like to add a suggestion, which I drew, and I want to put it on here, but I'm not sure if I could get any help. Okay, well, as you'll see, I drew that. I'm not sure it's really great, but I tried. As far as the cross signs that are, have the yield on them at the corner of East Bannon and Commerce, as you'll see on the screen, Mylum and Commerce and corner of East Crockett and Commerce, they are going to have to be removed, hopefully, fast. And the crossing gates need to be put up like over on Caddo and Commerce. They don't need to be removed or touched, they're right where they belong. And the reason I drew that is because I'm not really a good drawer, but as you can see, it would be of a lot of help to the people to know that there'll be only, not just one, but there'll be at least about maybe four. I did do a little bit of my checking and scouting on my own today just to see if that would be possible. I hope it works out. And then, of course, the public safety works, if they understand this, it would be good. I drew at the bottom a goose where there's a train going either north or south and it honks, and the goose, if it was out there, would say, honk yourself. That's not going to likely happen. If you'll just please take this into consideration, it would really be a lot of appreciation to me. And please do this so that no one else will get hurt. I believe one person accidentally got caught on the railroad crossing and his leg had to be removed, and we just can't have accidents like this going on. It's ridiculous. So take this into consideration. We do need those extra crossing gates at those places along with Caddo and East Commerce.
Very nice. Okay.
The drawing's not.
That's all we have.
That's all we have. We have no exact appointments to be considered today, and there are no items that are gonna consider agenda. Mr. Thompson, let's continue with items to be adopted.
We have one item on the consent agenda, Resolution 122, and a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Corbin. Please vote.
That motion carries with five.
We're now under resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 118 was postponed until November the 13th, so no action is needed. Resolution 119 approves the 2019 Downtown Development Authority program of work.
Sammy.
Moved by Councilman Corbin and second by the vice chair. Please vote.
Motion carries with six, one second.
Resolution 120 accepts a donation from the Downtown Shreveport Unlimited.
Sammy.
Moved by Councilman Corbin and second by the chair. Please vote. Motion carries with six, please.
Resolution 123 accepts the acceptance, authorizes the acceptance of a donation of a signage boulder to the city of Shreveport from Aseana Foundation to be placed at the location of the Aseana Asian Gardens of Shreveport, and to instruct the city attorney's office to prepare all required ordinances and documents necessary to institute the procedures for the formal renaming of the area to be known as the Asian Gardens of Shreveport.
So moved.
This may be the first time we've accepted a rock.
By the way, did you see the price of that rock? I mean, I got some rocks here, if anybody's interested in buying a few rocks. I'm happy to contribute those. That could be an economic development model for our city.
Moved by the chair, second by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
We do have the president of the Asiatic Society here. If the council would allow her to come up, they do have a festival this weekend that she would just like to give the council some information on, if that's possible.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. Come up now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We would have been happy to recognize her earlier in the meeting.
We got busy with other things.
We weren't distracted, we were just busy.
It's not a job to be busy, certainly.
Be busy or distracted.
It is a beautiful rock, if you've seen it. It's not just an ordinary rock. But it did cause us, with our major budget, it did cause us, we actually involved private citizens to pitch in. The ideals of having the Asian Garden is for the Asians in the community to get together and involve everyone so that each one would understand each other. And we have started the festival way back in, in 2006 when we started the Asian Gardens. And through the years, we have, we are now going to have our 13th Asian Spring Festival next year. And we are having this Saturday our 7th Autumn Festival. None of the board members get any benefits from these. We don't have any funding, none of our salaries. All of us are private citizens, all of us are Asians who now call Shreveport our home. So with that, we wanted to give our part of the world where we came from to the city of Shreveport so that together, we will have better understanding with different cultures. When we started the garden, there was a plaque there, when it was an abandoned park before, and we were cleaning up, and there was, there was a plaque that says, when my people of diverse culture and ancestry come together, it'll be healing for the trees. So with that, it was really something that made us move forward. We know that it's something that we wanted to do because each one of us, diverse as we are, if we get together, there'll be unity and diversity. As such, let me invite everyone here to see what we have done in the Asian Gardens of Shreveport. This Saturday, we're having the De Valley Asian, the Asian Autumn Festival, and we're featuring the De Valley Festival of Lights. And there'll be fireworks, free fireworks, and there's also Asian street food. And it's a chance for everyone here in the community to experience Asia free. Admission is free, and we just want people to enjoy Asian culture and knowing and understanding Asian culture. We could work together. So thank you so much for having, giving us time and also considering to have that as a corner for the Asians, and which we now appreciate that... a corner for the Asians, and which we now appreciate that we wanted to give back to the city. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One second, please. What time is it, you say, this Saturday?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, we have the unveiling of the beautiful boulder. It's gonna be five o'clock. And we have, and onwards, it will have, we will have the De Valley Festival dances and songs and multicolored Asian costume. If you come in an Asian attire, we actually have three prizes for those who are, who come in the best Asian attire, so please come.
Counselor Corbin.
You have created a very tranquil spot in a busy and busy part of downtown that has a lot of concrete and hard surface, and I appreciate all of y'all that done there.
Counselor.
Thank you.
And I would just commend you for how much that festival has grown and been a bigger part of our community. I remember when it started, and it is really a significant event in our city. So appreciate your leadership and the rest of your board for being such a big part of that.
I wanted to say that first and foremost, to God be the glory. And second, we'd like to say that everyone here, the leaders, who are we, we're no one, and yet you helped us. So thank you so much for everyone who has pitched in. Indeed, this, it takes, you know, everyone to get this going, so thank you.
One more, Counselor Flurrie.
You have my commitment that I will do everything in my power to get Counselor Bradford there in an Asian outfit, because he loves winning door prizes.
We will be looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Thompson, would you continue, please?
Thank you.
One twenty-four.
Resolution one twenty-four authorize and provides for the granting of a waiver to the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana. All city permits and inspection fees associated with the renovation and construction of a new warehouse and new distribution center.
Second.
Provided with respect there too.
It's been moved by Counselor Corbin and seconded by the vice chair. Discussion by Counselor Bradford.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's just an inquiry. I support the motion and the waiver, but do we have any estimate of what we're gonna relinquish here? Anybody?
I can get property standards to get that.
It's not that important. I mean, I just, you know, just email it to us once you get it, okay?
I want to say, the recent one was somewhere less than a thousand dollars, but there, I don't know how big this warehouse is, and it's a square footage and a lot issue.
And they're adding to an existing structure.
So there may be more. It might be more, but it's...
We'll get it to you.
It's not fifty thousand dollars. It is...
It's a support that we need to do. And they're coming to District E. Coming to District E.
If there's no other discussion, please.
So you can, you can report that the council helped bring jobs to District E.
That's right. It is the political season.
Please vote.
Motion carries with six.
The next is Resolution one twenty-seven. There was some discussion about a postponement.
Yes, Chairman, I move that we postpone this until the...
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bradford and seconded by the vice chair. To postpone until, no.
Thirteen.
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 Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries with six.
We're now into introduction of resolutions. There are two. Resolution one twenty-five authorizes a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs relative to the maintenance and operation of a veteran services offices as amended according, pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute twenty-nine, colon, two sixty dash, two sixty-two, as amended and reenacted.
Counselor Flurrie.
Resolution one twenty-six authorizes a matter to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Carr Riggs Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit for the city of Shreveport for fiscal year January first, twenty eighteen, through December the thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Counselor Flurrie.
Mr. Chairman, could we, could I ask that we vote on these two separately? I'd like to follow my mentor, Counselor Corbin's lead on reframing voting on one twenty-six, since I am a client of theirs. What is this introduction to that?
Client or an employee?
I'm a client.
For introduction, it shouldn't matter. I only think we do final questions.
Well, I just want to be, follow your lead.
I'll make the motion on one twenty-five then.
The motion by the vice chair, seconded by Counselor Bradford. Please vote.
Motion carries with six.
I make a motion on one twenty-six.
Motion on one twenty-six, second. Motion by Counselor, Vice Chair, and seconded by Counselor Corbin. Please vote. One twenty-six. And that motion carries with five and one abstain.
We're now into introduction of ordinances. First is ordinance number one ten, is a zoning matter. It rezones property located on the west side of Mansfield Road approximately seven hundred and ninety feet north of Hollywood Avenue from C-two to I-one. Ordinance one eleven is a zoning case, zoning matter C dash sixty-one dash eighteen. It would rezone property located on the west side of Airport Drive approximately two hundred, two thousand eight hundred feet south of Reverse Drive from C-two Heavy Commercial District to I-two Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance one twelve is also a zoning matter case number C dash sixty-two dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of Birdcove's Industrial Loop and Southway Drive from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Ordinance one thirteen is zoning case number C dash seventy-one dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Ellaby Road at Chincopin Drive intersection, Shreveport Ghetto Parish, Louisiana, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Ordinance one fourteen is a zoning matter case number C dash seventy-two dash eighteen. Rezones property located on the west side of Ellaby Road at the intersection of Ellaby Gardens Boulevard from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to C-three General Commercial District.
Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Woman Lynch and seconded by Counselor Corbin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries with five. One out.
We're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinances seventy-nine and eighty-one were previously postponed until November the thirteenth. No action is required. Ordinance eighty-two amends the city of Shreveport's capital improvements budget, authorizing the funds appropriated therein.
It's moved by Counselor Woman Lynch.
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Please vote.
Motion carries with five. One out.
Ordinance eighty-three corrects an alley width referred to in ordinance one thirty-seven of twenty thirteen with regard to the Benson Court closing and abandonment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Corbin and seconded by Counselor Flurrie, number eighty-three. Please vote.
Motion carries with five and one out of the chamber.
Ordinance eighty-four will close and abandon a portion of the alley in block one of the W.R. Carter subdivision. It's located in section thirty-seven Township, eighteen North, range fourteen West in Ghetto Parish.
So move.
It's been moved by Counselor Corbin and seconded by the vice chair. Number eighty-five, please vote.
There's no discussion. Motion carries with five and one out.
Ordinance eighty-five will repeal and replace section ninety dash three oh four and revise section one oh two dash one twenty-eight of the code of ordinances relative to revising and updating terminology that previously referenced the downtown transit terminal.
So move.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by the vice chair. Number eighty-five, please vote.
Motion carries with five. One out of the chamber, one absent.
Ordinance eighty-six amends the twenty eighteen Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
It's been moved by Counselor Woman Lynch and seconded by the chair. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Motion carries with six.
Ordinance eighty-seven was previously postponed until November the thirteenth. No action is needed. Ordinance eighty-eight is a zoning matter C dash fifty-two dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of East Kings Highway in Birdcove's Industrial Loop Expressway.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Corbin and seconded by Counselor Flurrie, number eighty-eight. If there's no discussion, please vote.
Motion carries with six.
Ordinance eighty-nine is zoning case number C dash fifty-two dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the north side of West Birdcove's Industrial Loop approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet east of Southway Drive from C-two General Commercial District to C-four Heavy Commercial District.
Chief Flurrie.
Flurrie. This one, I was, is it just, it's for introduction?
No.
I'm gonna ask the council to support me in postponing this. I need additional time on this. I haven't had quite gotten around to everybody that's concerned on this. If you would please support me.
Second postponement.
To November thirteenth.
It's been moved by Counselor Flurrie to postpone and seconded by Counselor Bradford, number eighty-nine, case number fifty-three eighteen. If there's no other discussion, please vote.
It hasn't been very fluid, you know.
By the way, I noticed the fluidity today, in fact, with the different government bodies. Totally understand.
Ordinance number ninety, concerns case number C dash fifty-five, five dash, dash, eighteen. It rezones property located at eleven fifty-five McKinley Avenue and property on North Market Street from I-two Heavy Industrial District to I-M-U Industrial Mixed Use District.
So move.
It's been moved by Counselor Bradford and seconded by Counselor Woman Lynch, number ninety.
I think I distracted you, Flurrie.
Fluidly. Please vote.
Call.
Call.
Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the table.
Okay. We have no property standards appeals or any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No, sir.
Okay, all the annual reports from office boards are committed.
I will be sending out an email later this week for a couple of proposed dates for our Audit and Finance Committee meeting.
Really? What's the subject?
We have some audits that have been completed that we need to review.
On your way out the door, you just...
Working to the last day, Counselor Woman.
That's right. That's a commitment.
Flurrie, any?
Well, we'll be sending something out on public safety and property standards. It'll be very busy toward the end of this year. You gotta remember now, we got a weekend of work. You gonna provide dinner? Multi-attack. Multi-attack.
You say we're meeting at Anthony's?
Yeah.
And there is a clerk's report.
Not today.
Not today.
Maybe tomorrow.
That heavy lunch.
See, Ed Crawford, or the animal communications?
Not from the administration, Mr. Chair.
No, I don't think we're gonna say that now.
Public comment.
Mr. Chairman, just one additional comment from me, and that is, Ms. Crawford, while I was sitting here, I got a text from, you remember the lady on, Ernest B. Miller, where the sewer main was in her yard?
Yes.
Okay. They removed that, but they hadn't been back to put grass down. Can you check and follow up on that for me?
Yes, sir.
You remember that?
I do remember very well.
Okay, so you can research the address.
I got it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we're at public comments. When you come up to make your comment, please state your name and address, and remember that you have three minutes to make your comments. First, we have Audrey Fontenot. And I hope I pronounced that right.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Lucky Fontenot. My address is ninety-four thirty-eight Ashmont Street. It's in the Newcastle subdivision. I put that right there in the office. No. I'm here to request the city of Shreveport government reevaluate and change the city ordinance section ninety-four dash, ninety-four dash eleven, that in summary states, a homeowner should be responsible for the sewer line from their home to the main sewer line, even if it extends beyond their property line under the city streets and into their neighbor's yard and or yards. I understand and fully agree with being responsible for sewer lines on my property, which is why I do my utmost to maintain my property, including cutting down three trees in my front yard. I have a blockage or break in my line that has been located in the sewer line that is not under my control. It is in my neighbor's yard across the street in the breezeway next to a tree. In the course of speaking with city officials and employees, I have found everybody to be courteous and respectful, if not given answers I wanted to hear. However, no one has been able to tell me when the ordinance went into effect or the reason it went into effect beyond perhaps a liability issue for the city. One official suggested I should feel good that eighteen years of owning property, that this is the first time I've had a problem. I reviewed my water bill for the last seventeen months. I have paid for residential inside sewer a total of five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents in that seventeen months. For sewer customer charge, I've paid a hundred and thirty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Averaging that out over eighteen years, the residential inside sewer total amount comes to an amount of seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. The sewer customer charge comes to a total of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. That's a total of eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and eleven cents in the eighteen years I've been a homeowner. A homeowner. I'm not feeling particularly lucky about that. The suggestion was also made that I could sue my neighbors if it is indeed damage caused by the tree. Those neighbors have only been there for two years. The tree's been there a little bit longer. So far, the estimates have run in a total of excess of four thousand dollars, and unfortunately, none of the trees that were cut down or that are still standing are money trees. The repairs are not covered by homeowners. I've also been told that reference in the ordinance states that the sewer lines lateral to the main sewer are my responsibility. I've been told by city officials that lateral in sewer terms is not the same as it is in Webster's dictionary. I respectfully request that the ordinance be reevaluated. Most homeowners are not able to afford the expense, and it's certainly not a selling point for homeowners who might be considering a move to Shreveport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fontenot.
Next, we have Mr. Albert Brown.
Hello. Ms. Mayor, in her absence, and city chairman, vice for city councilmen. I'm here again today concerning, thank you both, Flurrie, for coming and doing what you did the other day. I'm here concerning about, when you go over those holes down Lynnwood or any street, they throw these stuff in there, and then they don't smooth it out.
Really? Imagine that.
Yeah. And, you know...
When I'm on the job.
And that's, you know, that's, that's just a poor, that's poor. That's, you know, can they smooth it out so we can kind of go on over that? Because it seem like you hit off.
Excuse me, is it where the joint in the concrete? Or is it just, you know, flat surface?
Just flat surface, yeah. Yeah, that black stuff, you know, they throw it in there, and then they don't smooth it out. It's just lumped up there, and then you got to ride up, you know, you, you know? That, that's not, that's, that's poor taste. And, you know, I said I was gonna come and ask you all, can we see some... And, you know, I said I was going to come and ask you all, can we see something, that we can do something about that? And, you know, and I'm still asking about Lynnwood, you know, Lynnwood, when, you know, they're going to do anything about Lynnwood down there by thirty-one, thirty-two, because when you go down there, it's just.
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Okay.
That's the next phase.
Passing the hat, but we can.
You passing the hat, but it's coming? Okay, but, but you all understand what I'm talking about, about that, that just throwing that black stuff, what, what you call that stuff?
Asphalt.
Asphalt in there, and then just, and then they don't smooth it out?
Yep.
And then it just puffed up there and then you, you know, you know, guys, that's, that's kind of poor. You know, I don't think I'm the only one having that problem. I think we all having it, but, you know, so I ask you all, thank you all so much.
Absolutely.
And appreciate, and, and let me say this before I sit down. Every time I come, I ain't got no complaint, you know. I come because I, you know, I just, you know, I come because, you know, I see things and some people don't say nothing, and I'm going to speak up, you know, and I thank you so much, Ms. Flurrie, I thank all of you all so much for y'all doing y'all job, but can we see that we do something about that? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Next up, Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen-oh-one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, seven-one-one-oh-one. At last, Springs of Grace Baptist Church prayers have been answered after two years of search. Ninety-two percent over eight percent won this past Sunday for Jahil Richards, who is going to be our brand-new pastor. We had a breakfast with Jahil this past Sunday school and at the Sunday School rally and a written-in-question deal that was answered. In mind, I asked Jahil if he could sing, please come join the men's choir. He said he cannot because he cannot. So that took care of that. But he will make a joyful noise to the Lord. And we had a morning word worship, and then we had a secret ballot vote, ninety-two yes, eight percent no. The ones who voted yes won, so he's going to be our brand-new pastor. I don't know the date he's coming, but we were all very, very happy for the votes to go through. And then he was quoting about First John. Well, he got to first, chapter four, verse ten, that says, "This is love, not that we love God, but that he loved us and sent his son as an atoning sacrifice for our sins," which made me very happy since I saw that in the paper from the Billy Graham. So again, thank you so much for all your prayers and support. We really did appreciate getting that and having a new pastor after two years is really worth it.
Sammy, let me ask you a quick question now. When is your pastor going to start?
I don't know the date yet, but he will be coming. I just haven't heard any official date, but we did get him voted in as yes.
Okay, well.
I'll let you know when I know something.
Yeah, we'd like to invite him to the, to the city council meeting to do the prayer, okay?
Guess he's going to be throwing in the word.
Okay, thank you.
I'll put in a good word especially for you.
Okay, thank you, Sammy.
Was you on the pullback committee?
The pullback committee.
Special prayer, maybe.
Who are you?
I know the city attorney, Bravford, can carry a tune, so he may want to sing with you all, volunteer and sing with you all, this holiday season.
I'll sing solo. Solo.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comments.
All right, well, if there is nothing else, this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we all see a hand in the audience.
I filled out this form over a week ago, asking for permission to speak today.
Let her come through. Turn it in.
I emailed it back in. It was emailed to me. I completed it. I was.
Oh, yeah, you know what?
I remember that, yeah.
We saw it, you're right. That's, that's on, that's on our apologies.
That's on me.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
So are you done? Do I get to speak or no?
No. You get to speak. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
We, my name is Sherri Gilbert. I work with Magnolia Center Properties. Corey Griffin is the CEO. We have contacted most of the council members regarding donation of properties to us to do community improvements with. To my knowledge, these properties are all being held by the city right now due to being adjudicated or neglected properties. They're all in low-income areas. I have twenty-five-plus years of property management experience. Most of it is in renovations of lower-income properties and leasing those. We want to create a program called Better Homes where low-income people who would not typically be able to acquire a mortgage from a standard company, or even if they did get approved, they would have such an outrageous interest rate, they would never be able to pay it off. We would like to start a program to give these people a chance to make rent payments, and within a five-year period, if their payments are made, give them the home. That would take vacant properties on the city's roster that are in high-crime areas, clean them up, get families in there that are now having to live in low-income apartments, their children have nowhere to play. It lowers their self-esteem. We're trying to give that back to them. In the meantime, it would also put these properties back on the city's tax roll, and either the resident would be paying the taxes, or we would be willing to pay them until the term was up and the home was given to them. We see it as a win-win for the city, for the neighborhoods, and for the lower-income people that deserve a chance, or even a second chance, at a home of their own. We've got a program designed to work with the liaison officials for the city police department to try to get them into these neighborhoods with us for night-out functions so that the residents in the neighborhood can get to know and be comfortable with the police. We feel that this would bring the crime rate down, which would in turn keep people from continuously moving out of these neighborhoods and making it only worse. We're asking that the city donate these properties to our company so that we can use them to improve the city neighborhoods.
Thank you, and what you, what you might want to do is after the meeting, you might want to visit with the CEO and city attorney about the legalities of that donation, how that, how that may work out.
Okay, be happy to.
And have those discussions offline.
I think we can also put her with Bonnie Moore in Community Development, because we do some of that now, and so Ms. Moore's in the back of the room to the left. If you'll see her after the meeting, we'll be glad to listen to what you have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Hang on a second. Councilwoman Lynch.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I did have, and I read your email with interest, and two things. One was that came to my mind, and certainly, you know, there are other people that invest in, you know, adjudicated properties across the city.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of, you know, is, would this be exclusive to your company, or would this be something that we're creating a program, you know, like this, that would apply to other realtors or developers or people that are already, I'm saying from a, from a, from where I sit, you know, are we looking at something that's providing your company with exclusivity? Or are we looking at creating a program across the city that, you know, other people who are interested in doing what you all are doing? That's, that would just be my question to the administration.
We would be happy to work with any, this is something at this point, this program is what we've put together.
Correct.
To try to take positive steps for lower-income families.
Correct.
If other people wanted to do this same program, they would be more than welcome to. We would be happy to work with them and use what we've done so far as a guideline to give them any suggestions or advice.
Right, because there's so many properties. I mean, I'm, I'm.
Six thousand.
Yeah, there, there are thousands. There are even more that are not maybe, that are empty, that are, haven't even gotten to the adjudication process.
Yes, ma'am.
In these communities, and, and so the ones that you sent us the list of, it seemed like you were like cherry-picking.
I'm not the one that put the list together.
Okay.
We both have, I have extensive experience with renovations, working with contractors, dealing with repairs, with what code is, and the houses that I can drive right through my neighborhood and see that are literally occupied right now, the condition they're in makes me want to cry for the people that live there.
Absolutely.
That are actually paying rent to someone to live like that.
Right.
In my heart, I know we can help people.
Okay.
I've been a property manager here locally for twelve years, and I've worked on low-income properties. I've worked on the Cooper Road. I've worked over in Cedar Grove. I've gotten to see what these people, they're working hard, they have, I have single mothers working a full forty-hour-a-week job. She's also going to school full-time online, receiving no child support, no assistance from any agency, and paying rent for something that she has nothing to show for at the end of the month.
Right, but let me ask you.
We want to give these people a chance to have a home.
But let me ask you, how do, how do you determine which properties that you all chose? I mean, what was the criteria? Is it, is it a dollar amount? Is it one that you think you can rehab quicker, quicker?
The ones that he originally chose would get us started by being to, able to get any repairs done without having to almost tear it down and rebuild it.
Okay.
That's what the rent that is paid from those properties can go into additional properties to be also added into the exact same program.
You were kind of, you know, like here and there and here and there. Did you all look at like a particular, I guess to get the concentration to maybe look at bringing back an area? As opposed to, you know, two houses here, three over here, one over here across the city?
My expertise is in evaluation, repair.
Okay.
And structural. Corey's expertise, he's the one that went through and looked at the properties and selected the ones that are on this list.
Okay, because I guess my, my interest, because if you look at the adjudicated properties, I mean, they're pretty concentrated, correct, Ms. CEO?
That's correct.
They're pretty concentrated in certain areas heavily.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I, I was just curious about, you know, how you all went about choosing them? Were you really trying to bring back, you know, like a certain area and have as many houses in that area, or was it some other criteria that you used since they were kind of spread out?
There are several areas that we're aware of that have issues with crime rate and vacancies and deterioration in.
Right, like West Cedar Grove.
Excuse me?
Like West Cedar Grove.
Are you familiar with the Pines Apartments on Line Avenue?
That's over there, yes.
I did the renovation on that property personally, yes, ma'am. What used to be Kings Manor Two Apartments out on David Rains is now Forest Oak Apartments. I did the renovation of what's been done on that one. So I know the people in those areas, I know you have some of the most kind, gentle, wonderful, law-abiding, upstanding people that live in those areas. They just need somebody, because that's their address, they need someone to give them a chance to own their own home.
Right.
And a lot of times, that's not done, and it's not fair.
Well, not just own a home that's, that's up to code and in decent shape.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Because I've had more than one person walk in my office in tears saying, "I need a place to live." Where I live, you can see light through the floor. It rains in my bedroom when it rains. My children get a wet bed. And I said, "Are you buying or renting?"
Right.
I rent. Have you talked to the landlord? Landlord said, "If I want it fixed, do it myself," and they won't. And these people are left to live that way.
Correct.
Ninety-nine-point-five percent of the time, I rent to them.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, ma'am. That's most of that two-two-two-four-thousand number. Don't rent from them. No, ma'am, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to tell you, have you heard of Civic Source as well? There's a website called Civic Source that the city uses to manage and sell some of the adjudicated properties. Start looking at that, and after this, we'll get with you and get you some more information.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, if there is nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.